Call the meeting to order. Everyone, please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on the bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. May I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke here.
Mrs. Dye here.
Mrs. Marinelli here.
Mr. Mandela here.
And Mr. Sicala.
Here. The meeting is now open to the public for comments on the agenda, for items that are on the agenda. Seeing none, close that portion of the meeting. Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening, Ms. Sicala.
Do we have any committee reports this evening?
No.
Speechless.
Okay. Then let's move right on to our main focus of the night. We have one presentation. It's our budget presentation. Typically, we call this our budget hearing. The budget's going to be presented. We've been presenting our budget over the last several meetings in different pieces. We're going to re-present it as a whole. At that point, if members of the public have any comments on the budget for the 2015-2016 school year, we'll open it up at that time for comment and only for comment on the budget at that time. We're not going to save the comments for the budget to the end of the meeting because we're going to have voted on the budget before the end of the meeting. So, once the presentation is over, then we'll open it up. Mr. Featherman? Thank you.
Geez, Mrs. Frill, I'm sitting in your lap here. Good evening, everyone. Thanks so much for coming out for the budget hearing. It's sure to be an interesting listen and read. So, let's just get started, shall we? So, the Finance Committee has been busy. We've been meeting with stakeholders throughout the district to put together your budget for fiscal year 15-16. Of course, first, we have to identify what those budget drivers are and make some informed decisions on which ones take the wheel. In public session, you've been watching either at home, many of you have been here with us. We truly do enjoy your company. We've had sessions on the 24th of March, our last meeting on the 15th, and now tonight, the budget hearing. I'll go through the presentation relatively quickly. If you have questions along the way, feel free to jump in. Otherwise, we'll get you at the end. All set? Okay. Let's talk briefly about the timeline. Question already? Amy, yes?
You know, I'm wondering if you could move the other side of the floor. We can't see anything.
Yeah, I could probably do that.
Because I was real teaming.
I can't see the laptop, so if... If something funny starts happening back there, ah, yes. And you are, sir? Mr. K?
I'm Stacy's husband. I'm a technology person.
Can only be a... You know, I love working with smart people, being with smart... Thank you. Appreciate that. So, hey, listen, we can always learn, right? Okay, so, let's talk about the budget preparation timeline. Okay, so, what did I do now? I'm pushing the button and now it's... Stay with me, Mr. Mandela. It's going to be a long night here. Hang in there. So, December through February, we were, of course, building... Meeting with building-based teams to talk about their priorities. We all want what we want. We all have excellent ideas, working hard in the trenches every day, evaluating student and staff needs. And so, we prioritized. Calendar rolls forward, in February, the state aid figures come out. Not much to say there. As you'll see in the presentation there, these numbers are flat. They're the same this coming year as they were for this current year. In March, we had our tentative budgets approved, and we submitted them to the DOE. And that's the process that takes place every year. So far, so good. So, let's talk about the total operating revenues that we're dealing with. From soup to nuts, what we pay, what we use, what we consume to run the district. Here's an overview. You've seen something similar to this. At our last meeting, I had a very similar slide up there. Sands, this percentage column here. The percentage column gives you an idea of what's on the rise and where we've managed to find some savings. And what I will do briefly, expeditiously, is go through these categories, and you'll see the final numbers as we go through it. Just want to point out where there are savings or reductions, if you will, where efficiencies have been identified in regular instruction. The symbol here means this is a downward trend, a savings, if you will, a smaller number. And here as well, administrative costs. Those of you that have been here a while know that we've retired some very good folks. They've moved on to other things, and so, there are some cost savings in that area. Okay, let's look a little bit closer at some of these categories. Well, what are some of these categories? Let's just briefly define the budgeted fund balance. Each year, school districts will have a certain amount of money that's not used in that current fiscal year. Well, simply, those monies are carried forward to help offset the tax levy. And for us, this is what our value looks like. Ideally, speaking with the BA, you'd like the number to remain flat and not grow too large. So, you might suggest that we need to spend a little bit more money. I'm all for it. We make wise decisions. We prioritize moving forward. We're going to find some thoughtful areas to spend those additional monies. So, as the days and months unfold, we'll work with you and talk with you as we do that. Withdrawals from capital reserve are exactly that. There are certain projects that we have. We have money set aside for, and we will draw on that to pay for those projects. Rental incomes, just what it sounds like. We rent LRP downstairs. We bring in rental income. Those are the values. Custodial services at LRP. Those folks that rent pay 70% of the two custodians, their salaries, that is, salary and benefits, of those two gentlemen that service LRP. Thus, the revenue. And then, the local tax levy, there it is. Now, I want to highlight this asterisk area here, 2.51. We are using bank cap monies this year. Now, I'm not an expert on bank cap, and I may defer to the BA in a moment, but basically, the state defines a particular rate that a district would pay for health insurance. Let's use a round number. Let's say the state's value is 10%. Well, Cedar Grove comes in at 12%, which is sort of close to what the reality is. Well, that extra money is more or less banked over a three-year cycle. And districts such as us, when they need to hire additional staff, can use some of the bank cap money to do that. And that money gets rolled into the base budget. So, we are borrowing, if you will, 124,000 and change from bank cap. Now, not to make a long story out of this, we had over 300,000 in bank cap, but we're only using about half. Well, it's actually less than half. If you have questions about that, I'm sure we can elaborate later. Let's continue on with the operating revenue. Integrated preschool, program's going well. We're offering it again. We'll have our lottery in a few weeks. If you're out there, you're still considering it, we'll still take applications, right, Mr. Kenny?
Absolutely.
Aftercare program pays us rent. They provide a great service to the community. In exchange for using our facilities, we get some revenue. Interest income, self-explanatory, miscellaneous income, maybe not so much. I do have some notes here for that. Miscellaneous income comes from E-rate refunds, prior-year tuition refunds, and use of facility fees that we're collecting throughout the year. Certain vendors outside community groups want to use our facilities. There's a fee attached to that.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
Question. Second or third slide, I think there was a 16.414% increase in student services.
I'm sorry, which?
Please elaborate on that.
I might be able to. Which slide are we referring to?
Maybe the second or third. I believe it was 16.14% in terms of, I think it was notated as student support services? Yes. One, two, three.
Yes, this one here.
What is that, sir?
Okay, I'll ask my BA to step in on that, please.
Okay, the student support services are your health and attendance area. We have the school nurses, and we also have secretaries that help and assist with the attendance daily in the school district. We have related and extraordinary services for students with IEP needs regarding whether it's speech, OT, PT, that's the cost associated with that. We have guidance, or guidance departments in there, our child study team, library and media services, and staff training and instructional services.
Okay, so, it sounds like what you're saying, Ms. Savoniere, is that it's basically outside of the teacher roles?
Some of it... Well, we do have...
Services.
Yes, some of it is outside and some of it is inside. We have professional PT, OT, speech therapists inside the district. So, and also, we have our own guidance staff and the child study team, the LLDs, and et cetera.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Let's fast-forward back to where we were here. Extraordinary aid, the application has been submitted or will soon be, and we'll find out exactly what that will be. And we're only budgeting 150,000 of that. Historically, as you can see from last year, our number was quite a bit higher. We're hoping to reap the same benefit. One more slide on operating revenue. Here's the categorical state aid. As we had mentioned a moment ago, it's flat. The numbers are unchanged. This is what the state gives us, and we're happy to have it, frankly. Let's talk a little bit about total operating... Yes, ma'am. Yes, yes.
Park, can you elaborate on the timeframe? I know we had spoken about this previously, but I'm wondering, can you give us any insights based on any updated policies or statements made by the state and/or the Fed about any funding that might be withheld as a result of what is the 6.5, 6.7% opt-out rate by the state in this district? And how that impacts any funding at the state or federal level?
Sure, just as soon as I get an update, I will pass it on to the community. As of right now, there is nothing to report. We are eager to make sure that funding is not withheld. The Commissioner of Education has made some statements about what he thinks should happen, some recommendations going forward for districts that may not be doing their very best to recruit students to sit for the PARC test, i.e., hold community forums and the like. We're certainly not in that category. We've met with the community. Our teachers are very positive about it. So, that's sort of where we are.
So, I'm sorry. So, the state, nobody is coming in and sort of representing that they are going to be looking at the school district because of the opt-out rates?
No, not as of right now, to my knowledge, no. Yes, ma'am?
You can hear it happening around this slide though.
That's possible. I am not perfect, but please.
You had different totals back there, but it's the same number for you.
Oh, that's the gross total?
Yeah.
That's the gross total. It's not the slide total. So, if you had the slides before, yes.
Yeah. Thanks for pointing that out, actually. There are three slides here, so there's a running total. So, this would be Slide 1. These are the values Ms. Savoniere's talking about. They're adding up to the grand total that you see here. You're welcome. Okay, total operating expenditures now. Well, the money comes in, it also goes out. Let's talk about instructional programming briefly. Here are the numbers. Whoa. Okay, looking at the change column here, talking about prioritization, we spend a lot of time evaluating what our priorities are. And don't be surprised to see that there is a large swing in the change column, because frankly, our priorities change from year to year. We'll talk a bit more about these later. If you have questions, we'll expand on that. You can see here, I'd like to point out this 257% increase. Well, there's been an emphasis with my administration on instructional staff training. That's not an accident. We're focused on professional development. Many teachers in this room, we work side-by-side with those academies, with those professional development workshops in the summer throughout the year, and we're proud of that. We're working hard to improve the delivery of instruction, to improve alignment to the Common Core, prepare our sons and daughters for the PARC exam, and so forth. So, professional development is clearly a priority.
Will there be any formal policies put in place by the BOE regarding teacher opt-out of the PARC, sir?
Not at this time. Not at this time. Okay.
Any questions really need to be pertaining to the budget tonight, right now? If there's other questions that you have, Mrs. Williams, you can wait till the end of the meeting and ask those questions. This is for the budget hearing right now. Okay? Thank you.
Jumping back to technology, a couple, few weeks back, we had Mr. Walsh here, the Director of Technology, walked you through a detailed breakdown of technology expenditures. Here they are again. Numbers are the same if you were here. If you have those worksheets with you, nothing's changed, no tricks up our sleeve. There they are. If you have questions specific to that, Mr. Walsh is here. He'd be happy to talk about VM ware and internal switches and wire connectivity and antivirus licenses, media purchases, and so forth. Special education. Mr. Kenny earlier also gave a detailed breakdown of special education costs. They are on the rise. We embrace that. We strive to meet every child's needs. You all know that. We work very hard, roll up our sleeves to identify what those needs are. It costs money to do that, so there are increases here. Employee benefits. Just recall your attention to the last category there. Certainly, a large driver, talk about budget drivers. Health benefits is certainly one of them. On a $28, $29 million budget, you're looking at $3.5 million for that. But that's the way it is. But it's there for you. These other items as well, social security pension, you know, they all resonate with you, I'm sure. Those are the values for this current year and fiscal year 15-16. Support services are exactly that. Attendance health services, nursing, guidance, sorry, administration, my salary, the BA's salary, these are the values here. Again, we mentioned a moment ago, the hiring of new folks with retirements. We're seeing some savings here, significant savings in the school administration line. Now, the general administration is not just salaries here. I just did, I did write a few things down. There's also administrative assistance fees and salary, attorney fees, the cost for fingerprinting for our volunteers. We don't turn anybody away. If you have children in the district and you'd like to be fingerprinted to volunteer, we pay for that. Subservice, Strauss ESMA are policy providers, so it adds up. More support services. Transportation, aid in lieu, athletics, co-curricular. The last meeting we had, we did a detailed breakdown of co-curricular and athletics as well as buildings and grounds, but certainly, if you have any questions, let us know. Operations and maintenance, again, a summary. We spent time last go-around really looking at those numbers. Let's talk now, let's transition to the analysis of tax impact. Certainly, for the residents of Cedar Grove, we'll talk a little bit about evaluations of your homes and the impact on your tax burden. There's the tax rate per $100 of assessed valuation. Not so sure how useful this figure is, but we include it every year. You can see from 2011, 12 to now. Let's talk about some more tangible-type numbers. The average assessed value of a home in Cedar Grove, we did see some declines, pretty precipitous declines here early, but the good news is that it's trailing off and nearly flat from last year to now. It's a good thing. As a homeowner like yourself, we like seeing that. And how about the actual property tax increase to the average assessed valued home? Well, here it is. You can see here, over the years, we had a decline and then some measurable increases. And going from this current year to next, there it is. The numbers, I think, speak for themselves. I think it's a fair figure, given all the great things that we're doing here. What I'd like to wrap up with is just a quick synopsis of what we had talked about at our last meeting. Initiatives specific to curriculum. Again, a emphasis on professional development, particularly at the K5 level. This year is language arts, next year mathematics. Common Core academies continue. Curriculum writing, of course, continues, goes hand-in-hand with the purchase of literacy series, math series, the day-to-day operations. The lifeblood of your school is the curriculum, so you must maintain, rewrite, revise, edit, so forth. Personnel. We're in a position now with sound fiscal planning where we can add staff in critical areas, expanding the oral languages department, math at the middle school, special education needs, and making one of our part-time music teachers full-time. Some more enhancements. The zero-period SAT prep class at the high school, PSAT. We talked about the expansion of the science department. We're bringing on AP Environmental. I just mentioned the expansion of oral language, specifically in Spanish and Italian. Those are the only two languages we offer. Adding a staff member in the Italian department, adding honors-level courses, next year AP Italian stuff, and the expansion of our virtual high school program. Yes, AP comes on board the year after next. One last slide. Purchasing Performance Matters. I'd spoken to you months ago about my involvement with the Tech Committee at the state level and my participation in Tech Expo held in Atlantic City. And one of the things that came from that was our evaluation and purchase of Performance Matters. It's going to allow us to really start digging into the data and helping us differentiate instruction. And we'll be talking more about that as the board meetings unfold. And lastly, curriculum writing. It's a big part of professional development and what we do to maintain the lifeblood of our schools. Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Mrs. Williams?
Sure.
Mr. Featherman, I'm sorry, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Featherman, my, what we should do now, now that your presentation is complete?
Yes.
We should open up the floor to public questions or comment. The microphone should be placed back to its location, and whoever has a question or comment should approach the microphone, state their name and address, ask per policy?
Right.
And ask their question or make their comment.
That's a fabulous idea.
I would ask that you move the microphone back, please.
Go back to my seat? This is okay, Mrs. Frill? All right.
Can I come up?
You, yes, you are recognized, Mrs. Williams.
So, I'm sorry, I have to state my name, Tara Williams?
And your address, please.
Okay. I'm in Cedar Grove, New Jersey.
Mrs. Williams?
Yeah.
You need to state your address. You have not been granted a waiver to not do that.
Seven Bradford Way. My son goes to Memorial Middle School.
I didn't ask you who your...
His teachers are awesome.
I didn't ask you who your son was.
They are professional and transparent, unlike other members of this district.
Mrs. Williams, do you have a question regarding the budget? If you do, please ask it.
Yes, I do.
If you have a comment, please make it.
I do.
If you would like to make a comment regarding anything else, you're happy to stay around till the end of the meeting, approach the microphone, state your name and address, and make the comment.
Am I going to detention right now, Mr. Sicala?
No, Mrs. Williams, you're in a board meeting.
Exactly.
Okay?
Exactly.
And you will follow the protocol of the board meeting. So, thank you for stating your address. Now, we will hear your comment or question on the budget.
As I mentioned, I have concerns about the Performance Matters software. How much does it cost? Will it be beta-tested? You just decided to purchase this software based on what? Did you pilot it? Did you test it? How will it be implemented, given all of the other standardized testing that's going on in the system? I'm concerned that this might be data overload, overwhelming, that people are gathering, inputting, evaluating the data when they should be boots-on-the-ground, focused on the students, face-to-face.
I can respond to some of that, Mrs. Williams. I appreciate your concerns. We've met as a leadership team with the Performance Matters folks. They came and spent the day with us, walked us through all the positive features of it. And you touched precisely on it, Mrs. Williams. The idea here is to minimize the amount of time that our teachers are spending gathering assessment data. And what it does is it allows them to filter that data into essentially class rosters where Janie and Johnny Smith's data, whether it's formative assessment data, summative assessment data, SAT data, it's all there. And there's no searching. There's no time wasted. It's exactly that reason why we were eager to get our hands on this platform.
So, the teachers had beta-tested it? They tried it out before the district purchased the software? Is that what you're saying? When they came, the vendor came?
No, I certainly did not say that. We will be identifying...
So, you weren't clear. All right. So, thank you for clarifying, sir.
Thank you. Are there any further comment or question?
So, it wasn't tested or beta-tested with the teachers to see if the teachers liked it or not?
Are you through with your question or not?
I think it's a valid question, sir.
You asked a question, he answered it. Is there another question?
He did not answer it.
He said it was not beta-tested, Mrs. Williams.
Well, how did you know he was supposed to, that this is the appropriate software? Because another district had recommended it?
Mrs. Williams, you asked your question, you got your answer.
I'm sorry, sir, with all due respect, I did not get the answer to my question.
Mrs. Williams, let me remind you that you pay my salary. And so, what you pay me to do is build bridges with folks like the Performance Matters people and spend hours of my day and over multiple periods of time in workshops and conferences across the state and beyond to evaluate. You pay me to evaluate and make informed decisions on what's best for the students and staff of this district. So, what I have done, in my good judgment, is do just that. And what I've done is partnered with our leadership team. And what we will do this summer is identify the early adopter teachers in each building throughout this district who are willing and eager to adopt the Performance Matters platform. They will not be assigned to this. They will not be required to do this for the 15-16 school year, but I'm sure, for a moment speaking for some of them in here, we have people that can't wait to partner with the administrative team on this work. That's what you pay me to do, and we've done that. That's what you pay me to do, and we've done that.
Well, I look forward to speaking to some of the teachers and their opinions on the software.
You're welcome.
Because I feel like I just get one voice and one perspective, and it's important to get people who are actually in the field and their perspective, so. But thank you for responding and clarifying and answering specifically.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there any further question or comment on the budget?
Can I make a comment?
Sure. You have the mic.
I just want to say that I was on the finance committee with Mrs. Burke, and this is the fourth time I've gone through the budget process. And I wanted to thank Mr. Tevenier and Mr. Featherman for everything they did in the budget process. I think it was extremely thorough. It was, as always, very informative. I feel very confident about the budget. And in looking at all of the things that Mr. Featherman listed in the presentation, I can honestly say I feel that we're doing more this year than we've been able to accomplish in prior years. And I see that as a major step forward for, for the district, for the teachers, and for our children. So I wanted just to thank you again for another great budget process. I appreciate it.
And, and thank you to the finance committee. And actually, you know, starting at the teachers, to the department heads, to the school principals, and the whole process coming together, and then ending up in, in your hands, I know you guys, how hard you work, along with our administration. So, so thank you both for all your late nights and tireless work.
Same time next year.
You got it. There. Okay, can we have the lights turned back on, please? Okay, let's move on the agenda from the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary. Under minutes, may I have a motion for items B1 through B4? B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of April 15, 2015. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of March 2015. B3 is a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of March 2015. And B4 is a motion to approve the board secretary certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the Administrative Code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the code. May I have a, a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Is there any discuss, oh, sorry. Any discussion, please? Roll call.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
I abstain from B1 since I was not at either meeting, and I to B2, 3, and 4.
And Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. Under bills, may I have a motion for items B5 and B6? B5 is a motion to pay the list of bills that was in our packet for April 28, 2015. And B6 is a motion to approve the payment as set forth therein for the first quarter unemployment liability. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. May I have a motion for items B7 through B10? B7 is a motion, it's actually a resolution, to establish a maintenance reserve account for the purposes of maintaining our district's facilities. B8 is a motion to approve the participation in the joint transportation agreement with the Sussex County Regional Cooperative to coordinate district transportations for the 2015-2016 school year as set forth in that item. B9 is a motion to approve the submission to the State Department of Education for the project number set forth therein to remove the existing obsolete boiler. This is at the Cedar Grove High School. We had a presentation on this a couple of weeks back. And with this item, we will just be submitting the plans for, for approval, and we will discuss at a later date if we're going to act on those plans. And B10 is a motion to approve the budget that we've been talking about for so many weeks and that Mr. Featherman has presented to us tonight. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. We have a superintendent's report this evening, Mr. Featherman?
Yes, we do, Mr. Sicala. I had some copies set on the side there. I didn't anticipate 110 of you being here, but maybe you can share them. Look, I want to recognize the teachers in the room again because the lion's share of this report comes from you. And so what myself and what our principals do is they reach out to each of these grade level teams, and they're looking for your feedback on all things going on in your classroom. So what I do each month, what our principals do each month, your principals, we distill this down into this report. And so take some time, read through it, we post them after each, each monthly board meeting where we release it. It's, it's, it's long, and it's filled with all kinds of good things that you folks are doing and that we're assisting you to make happen. So I also wanted to point out that the PARC test is, is back. It went so nice the first time, we thought we'd do it twice. That seems to be the mantra these days. And again, it's a credit to all of you. You know, here it is Tuesday night, and we've had a couple of days of PARC testing, and would you say, we got this. So moved. We've got this. So we, we thank you for that. Just a shout-out to Mr. Pearson and Mrs. Barbosa, not just for their work with the PARC test, but particularly Mr. Pearson with his work with, with rewriting the K through 5 language arts curriculum. We've made some incredible strides in that area. We will very soon be releasing the final versions of each of those grade levels, K through 5, in language arts. They're looking great, thanks to the committee members, you know who you are, that are there working hard during school, after weekends. We couldn't do it without you. So thanks for keeping it going. We have a lot of work ahead of us, but we've accomplished much. And I think these superintendent's reports are at least in some way, you know, to recognize your work. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Featherman. Okay, can I have a motion under personnel for S1 through S9? S1 is a motion to approve the superintendent's report that we just heard. S2 is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from April 15, 2015. S3 is a motion to approve the teacher that's set forth in S3 as a phys ed teacher for the Memorial Middle School. S4 is a motion to approve the establishment of a chess club advisor at MMS for the 2015-2016 school year at the rate set forth therein. S5 is a motion to approve custodian at the, or general custodian at the salary set forth therein for successfully acquiring the Black Seal High Pressure License on March 20, 2015. S6 is a motion to reimburse the school-based volunteers as set forth in that item. S7 is a motion to approve the school-based volunteer as set forth in that item. S8 is a motion to authorize the attendance as set forth in, in that item. And S9 is a motion to approve the students as set forth in S9 for classroom observations. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. Under acceptable use policies, may I have a motion for S10, which is a motion to approve on first reading the policies regarding the K-12 Student Network and Acceptable Use Guidelines for the Cedar Grove Public Schools and the staff network and acceptable use policies for the Cedar Grove Public Schools? May I have a motion for those, for that item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Featherman, before we vote on that item, can you please elaborate a little bit on the policies that were, that were in question right now?
Would love to. The good work continues, folks, the tech committee. Shout-out to those of you here that are on that committee. I think we've done some good work. We've got bogged down a little bit with the acceptable use policies, but it is a policy that will govern both staff and student use of electronic devices throughout the district. So the two documents, they're extensive. Each year, the staff, each staff member and each student will be required to read through students with their parents and sign off that they agree to this pledge. I'll just read just a couple of sentences, it sort of summarizes what, what it's about. "The acceptable use policies serve as a written agreement between the Cedar Grove Public Schools, specifically the Board of Education and its staff and/or students. It outlines the appropriate uses for technology in the district, as well as the consequences for failure to adhere to those guidelines. To use our resources, all staff and students must sign the agreement and return it to school." And so we, we'll have them and we'll use them for, for years to come. And each year, we will revisit the acceptable use policies as technology is changing by the minute. We will update them each year. So again, thanks to the tech committee for your hard work with this.
Thank you, Mr. Featherman. Is there any comment or questions on, on that before we vote?
Just, is there any significant changes from last year? Is there something we can highlight, or it was just kind of a rewrite to include all technology?
The, the one significant change was mentioned in the policy reads a couple of months ago, where we had to specifically mention language about all students being educated on the proper use of chat sites and appropriate use of technology. And that was written into policy. So the acceptable use policies include that specific language, that each year our students will be exposed to the proper behaviors while using technology. Other than that, it's just, it's revised with new language and references some, some newer things.
Thank you.
Any further comment or questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
I have a question about the policy.
You, you, I'm sorry, Mrs. Williams, you can't, you can't ask a question right now. For, for your information, this is only on first read, so it doesn't become approved as a final policy until second read. So if you have any questions or comments, we're happy to hear them at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
And there'll be, the next meeting, there'll be a vote on second read if it's approved on first read tonight. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke said yes. Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. Under contracts, may I have a motion for S11? And that's a motion to approve the contracts as set forth therein for special education students as recommended by the Director of Special Services. May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comment or questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. The meeting is now open to the public for comments for items that are either on or off the agenda. Mr. Canel? State your name and address, please.
My name is Chris Canel. I am the president of the Cedar Grove Education Association. I am the elected officer of the 190 or so teachers, instructional aides, and secretaries in the district. I'd like to ask a waiver for the, for the address.
Your professional address would be?
Oh, thank you, I would appreciate that. 90 Rugby Road. First of all, I want to commend the board. Thank you. First of all, I want to commend the board on the budget. I think the board, it should be noted how hard the board works on that and that they present a very fiscally responsible budget. But more importantly, I am here to say that I have, I am a social studies teacher at the high school, and I have been working in the district for 15 years. And I am Cedar Grove. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Hi, my name is Marie Riley. I'm a first-grade teacher here at North End School. I'm lucky enough to be teaching in Cedar Grove for the past 17 years.
Mrs. Riley, just, you can use your professional address, but please state your address when you come to the microphone.
Okay. It's North End School, first-grade teacher at North End School.
I understand, but just, just, please.
122 Stevens Avenue.
Thank you very much.
Cedar Grove. I'm lucky enough to be teaching here for the past 17 years. I live in Cedar Grove, and my two daughters, Tara and Caitlin, went through the Cedar Grove School District. And I am Cedar Grove.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Danielle Jacob. I reside at 142 Tierney Drive in Cedar Grove. I teach first grade here at North End School. I have lived in this town since I was three years old. I graduated from Cedar Grove. My husband graduated from Cedar Grove. I have taught some of your children here. And in a few years, my daughter will be lucky enough to get several of these teachers, hopefully all of them, at one point or another. And I am Cedar Grove.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jody Bieber. I live at 41 Catherine Court in Cedar Grove. I'm a secretary in the guidance office at Cedar Grove High School. I am a 30-year resident of Cedar Grove. I have been working in the school system for 15 years. I have two daughters who are graduates of Cedar Grove, and both are working, thank God. And...
And beautiful.
And beautiful. And I am very proud to say that I have been the president of every parent organization in the Cedar Grove School Districts, and I support my teachers. I always have, I always will. I love my community, and I am Cedar Grove.
Good evening, I'm Sue Sweeney. I teach at 122 Stevens Ave, North End School in Cedar Grove. I've been teaching kindergarten at North End School for 14 years, and I am Cedar Grove.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Beth Legre. I live at 60 Westland Road in Cedar Grove. I've been teaching basic skills, and I've been educator in Cedar Grove for 22 years. I have two boys that attend South End School. I'm blessed. I feel I love their teachers, and I'm grateful to be a part of the system. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Barbara Frye. I teach art at 500 Ridge Road Memorial Middle School, as well as a couple of classes at North End and South End. I've had 25 wonderful years, and I love what I do. I am Cedar Grove.
Hi, I'm Stacy K. from C211 at 90 Rugby Road. I spent seven years in the middle school, and I'm finishing up my third year in the high school, so I'm just about to complete my 10th year in Cedar Grove. Very excited. And I am Cedar Grove. Oh, and I teach language arts.
Hi, my name is Stacy Rigo. I live at 19 Longview Road, Cedar Grove. I am a special education teacher, teaching at North End School. I have been here for 16 years, and I will have two kids going to school here eventually. I am Cedar Grove.
Good evening, my name is Nancy Manley. I also live at E216 90 Rugby Road and the high school. I'm just completing my 28th year as a special education teacher, and I am Cedar Grove. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Cheryl Johansson. I was born, raised, and lived in Cedar Grove for 32 years, went to North End as a kid. My husband's from Cedar Grove as well. I'm currently teaching here at North End, second grade, and teaching 29 years. So I am Cedar Grove.
My name is Laura Sax. I reside at 122 Stevens Ave, North End School in Cedar Grove. I'm a school nurse at North End School, and this is my 18th year, and I am Cedar Grove.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Coakley. I live at 23 DeDonno Drive. I have been teaching at South End School in Cedar Grove for 18 years. I've been in kindergarten for, yeah, 18 years. I hope that's a good expression. I've been teaching kindergarten for 14 years. I have two children that have gone through North End and are now in the Memorial Middle School, and I am Cedar Grove.
I'm Evelyn Oberendorf. I reside at 157 Young Avenue, Cedar Grove. I've lived there for 28 years. I beat everyone. I came to Cedar Grove as a music teacher in 1972. I have 32 years in. I'm retiring in the fall. I love my job. I have two very successful children who went through the Cedar Grove School System. I am Cedar Grove. I am Cedar Grove.
Hi, I'm Jenny Villanueva, and I teach here at North End School, so 122 Stevens Avenue. I've been teaching for over 20 years. I am Cedar Grove.
I am Claire Swanson, 90 Rugby Road. I've been the high school media specialist for 33 years. I am Cedar Grove.
My name is Lori Sudali. My husband and I have lived at 144 Franklin Street for the past 26 years. Our two sons, Dennis and Michael, have both graduated from the Cedar Grove School System, and we're lucky enough to have many of these wonderful teachers here. I have been with the district for 17 years, the first year as an aide in the library, and the last 16 as the attendance secretary in Cedar Grove High School. I am Cedar Grove.
Hi, my name is Geraldine Gerard Turzo. This is my, I reside at North End School now. I've taught in every school, except for the high school, when I've chosen to. This is my 22nd year teaching. I proudly grew up in Cedar Grove with my siblings. I have nieces and nephews that are here, and I'm elated because it's such a fantastic school system. I'm really proud of where I work. And I am Cedar Grove.
Good evening, my name is Andrea Watson. I feel like I reside at 90 Rugby Road. I am a health and physical education teacher at Cedar Grove High School. And even though I've only been with this district short four but awesome years, I am Cedar Grove.
Good evening, my name is Robin Calley. I live at 14 DeNando Drive. I've been the high school nurse for the last 15 years. I am a lifer of Cedar Grove. Born, raised. My kids went here, dragged my husband from Garfield to Cedar Grove. I am Cedar Grove, and I love this school, I love this community. We can't, we teachers do not do, can't do enough. We do more than enough for this school. We love children. We love working here, and I can't say enough that my kids had all these teachers. Probably they regret it at some time. I know, working at the high school, I regret it. But I am Cedar Grove, and I love it here.
Okay, I can't top that one. I'm Barbara Weber. I do not live at South End School, as commonly believed. I live at 160 Sherman Ave. I lived here for 40 years. I teach at South End, speech, special ed, ESL. What else? Oh, and I do lunch duty. I have three great boys that went through the system, a husband who coaches here. I don't coach. I just am a fan of the sport. My boys have coached, worked, et cetera, at Cedar Grove, and I love it here. Thank you.
Me llamo Felice Spinelli, y vivo en la Avenida Ridge, numero 500. I live at 500 Ridge Road in Cedar Grove. Es mi placer enseñar el español a los estudiantes en los grados 7 y 8. It is my pleasure and my joy to teach Spanish to our 7th and 8th graders at Memorial Middle School, y yo soy Cedar Grove.
Hello, I'm Jen Justin Foose, 90 Rugby Road High School. I've been teaching music, choir, band, AP Music Theory, Fundamentals of Music, et cetera, for 15 years. I am Cedar Grove.
Hi, my name is Lisa Tower. I live at 84 Yorkshire Drive. I am a product of the Cedar Grove School Systems. I was born and raised in Cedar Grove. I have my sisters, my husband, we all went through Cedar Grove School Systems. We obviously love it here. My nieces now attend Cedar Grove High School and Middle School, and I am Cedar Grove.
Kathleen Hall, 90 Rugby Road. I've been a special education teacher for eight glorious years of working with these people at the high school. And though I may have been born a hillbilly, but I am Cedar Grove.
Hi, my name is Carolyn O'Connell. I live at 4 Boardick Road, Cedar Grove. I'm here in support of the teachers in this room, and I request that the board quickly and in a fair manner settle the contract with the teachers. You mentioned many of the important items in your report here, including property taxes and tax increase. It's a well-known fact that property values go up when school systems are good. Keeping quality teachers and attracting quality teachers comes with providing a competitive salary. And currently, I don't believe that you are doing that, so I'm asking that you settle a fair contract with your teaching staff in order to keep the quality members that you have in this building. I also heard you talk about priorities, and one of them that has recently passed through the referendum was the facilities upgrades, including the sports arenas. I fully and completely support all of the extracurricular activities, both sporting and arts. And in your presentation, you showed a very nominal tax increase, which, believe me, I appreciate. And I think if we can do all of those things, and increase the attendance and the facilities and upgrade them, that we can also provide a fair salary and contract to our teachers. So, that's why I'm here. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that for a second, if I may. Ms. O'Connell, was that your name?
Yes.
Okay. I just have a, I also would like to settle a fair contract as well. I am on the negotiating committee for the teachers. I don't know if you're aware of that. So, when you say "fair," I'd like to know what your interpretation of "fair" is.
Well, basically, the one thing I'm asking is that the process not drag out, so...
I'm in your corner on that as well.
The second thing is that currently, from the information that I have available to me, Cedar Grove in pretty much every category that is negotiated is at the bottom level of the county, bottom three. And I believe that a district such as Cedar Grove, with staff members, with the incredible heart that they have, and the incredible effort that they put forth, which you mentioned in your brief superintendent's report, deserve to not be compensated at a level that puts them in the bottom three in every category of the county. So, that's what I mean when I say "fair."
So, do you think it would be fiscally responsible for the board to go out with a percentage to bring them up to par with the other?
That is not what I've asked. I am not saying that you bring them up in one fell swoop. What I am asking is that during the negotiation process, that you look very carefully at each item, and you consider the fact that in all areas, they are currently in the bottom three. You may not, in one contract, be able to make all of the areas on par with the rest of the county. But I do believe, in a fiscally responsible manner, you can at least target one or two.
And it...
If the residents of Cedar Grove, in such a small tax increase, can have facility upgrades to the level that we are going to have, I think it is only fair to prioritize those individuals that are responsible for educating your children.
Mrs. O'Connell, I just want to clarify something.
I just want to say, I'm a product of the Cedar Grove School System, and I'm a resident, I'm a taxpayer. So, yes, I want you to be fiscally responsible, but I also want you to prioritize in a way that buildings and facilities upgrades are not seen as more important than the livelihood of our teachings. That's the...
I just want to clarify. In that $145 a year, it does not include any of the facilities upgrades.
No, 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 no.
So, that's a totally separate tax increase that will come down the road.
I understand, but in all of the press and publicity that was put out about the referendum, it was not a huge increase per resident, which is what allowed the referendum to pass.
Right, absolutely.
It is why Cedar Grove came out in force and in such large numbers passed that referendum. So, what I'm saying is, if we can do all of that, I'm not saying it's part of the $145.
Right.
And I appreciate you clarifying that, if anyone thought that's what I was saying. What I'm saying is, if we can do all of that in a fiscally responsible way, again, I support it. I want the children of Cedar Grove to have their athletics. I want the children of Cedar Grove to have their arts, their music programs, their art education, their drama. But I also want respect to be shown to the members in this room by negotiating and settling a fair and equitable contract. And if that means that one or two categories, we bump them up to be on par, and then in the next contract, we handle one or two others, then that's fine. Look down the road. I'm not asking you to do anything that would be fiscally irresponsible, but I'm also not asking you to continue a pattern that has gone on since I was a high school student.
And I could tell you that that pattern is, if that's the perception, then I feel that you're being given the wrong perception, because this board, what we have done is tried to be fair. We have, again, I have, I'm only speaking out because I haven't been able to. I've been trying to hold back, but every week, and I respect so many of you in here, and I can't hold back from clapping, and I'm not going to sit up here as a board member and just because I'm on the negotiating team and act like that you people are not important, that I don't respect almost every one of you in this room, that what you have done for our school district is unbelievable. Again, I speak straight. I'm not going to sit up here and make and say things that I don't feel from my heart. And what I just said, I feel from my heart, because there are things that I don't respect, and I'm sorry. I'm not going to sit up here, because there's people up here that are in this audience that know that I don't respect certain things. So, if I sat up here and said that I respect everything, I'd be a liar. And I'm not a liar. I shoot straight. I say what's going on. And I love this school district. I don't sit up here, and I'm not on the board for nine years, I think you guys don't see me getting a lot of money doing this. It's because I care, and it's because I have passion, and I don't have an agenda, and I never did from day one, and I never will, ever.
May I just...
I'm not finished. So, all I'm asking is the truth to go out there. Not misconceptions, not wrong perceptions. That's what upsets me.
The perception that I have does not...
I'm not saying it did. I'm not saying that it did, at all. I'm not insinuating that.
The other piece is that I don't think half of the members in this room would still be here at the salary level that they had in comparison to their peers in other districts within the county and outside the county, if their heart wasn't all about the students.
I agree, but you have to also understand that this board didn't set the salaries or where we are today. So, to go out there with something to make it where you're looking to do...
That's not what I'm asking.
But what we have done is tried to do that. You have to understand that things were taken out of our control a few years ago from a governor that did things that were out of our control.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay? So, that set things back, number one. So, now, to go ahead and do the things, you're not a part of our negotiations, and unfortunately, the majority of people in here are not a part of those negotiations. So, we as a board don't know what's being conveyed back and what's not, or how it's being conveyed back. But I could tell you that from day one, from the negotiations of this contract, we want it done and over with. There is nothing that we are doing as a board to stop that. And if there is a perception out there that that's what's being done, then I want to right now say, that's not being done. We had a meeting the other week, the other night. We were willing and able to stay there all through the night. So, for the, really? Really? So, if you want to have this discussion in public, I'm open to do it.
That, I just want to make clear that no information that has been passed to our members has been untrue, lies, or misleading.
I didn't say it was.
Okay. I just want to make that clear, because I...
No, I didn't.
When I stand here...
If that's how I implied it, I didn't mean it that way. How I meant it was, I'm not sure what's being filtered out there, or how it's being filtered. I'm not in control of that. But if it, there is nothing that the board is doing to hold back a contract being done.
Sir, all I did was come here as a resident, knowing that the teachers are without contract, and ask you to settle a contract. I have no knowledge of your negotiations, as you said. If you took the tone that you took and the perception that you took from my comment, I'm sorry, that's on you, not on me. I know nothing.
That's not what?
That's on you, it's not on me. I know nothing about...
No, you said to settle a fair contract, and all I'm saying...
Yes, that's my personal opinion.
And that's what we want to do as well.
And I understand that, but you took my comment as an attack on the board. I'm not making an attack on the board. And your responses to everything that I have said and your clarifications make me feel that you took my comments as an attack on the board. I'm not making an attack on the board. I'm a resident of Cedar Grove. I'm a product of the Cedar Grove School System. I'm a taxpayer within this community, and I know that the teachers are without contracts. I also know it to be a fact that they're at the bottom level in all areas, of the bottom three. I'm not saying that you can go in in one fell swoop and fix it. I'm not saying that the governor didn't tie your hands behind your back. What I'm saying is that as a resident, whatever you need to do on both sides, I'm asking that you do it. I'm asking that you recognize the hard work and dedication of the members in this room, because there are many districts where people would have fled based on having a contract that is inequitable compared to the other districts within the county. You don't have that here. And I think you need to be happy with the fact that everyone working in your community, or the majority of the people working in your community here, are sticking it out for the love of their profession and the love of your children. And all I'm asking you to do is, yes, be fiscally responsible, but also prioritize the men and women in this room who are Cedar Grove.
And I do.
Over facilities. And I understand that you are not directly responsible for these facilities.
Totally.
Yes, I get that. But I don't want the message of the residents in Cedar Grove getting facilities and extracurricular sports are more important than the teachers and the instruction they're providing and their livelihood. That's my...
And the other thing that I want to point out too... The other thing I'd like to also point out is that you have to look at contracts in each county.
I understand how contracts work.
Not just salaries.
Negotiations work.
If you look at contract to contract, you will see that we are very, we are competitive in areas that other towns are not. So, look at the entire contract, not just salary. Do you know what that means?
I...
I mean, the whole, you know what their contract has. I didn't mean that in the way of, do you know what that means? Do you want, you know their contract?
No, in that manner.
You know their contract?
Do I know their contract back to front? Absolutely not. But do I understand that a very important part is the salary component? Absolutely. Do I understand that you're competitive in other ways? Yes, I do. But I am here to speak...
But there's other parts of the salary that's not just salary.
Sir, I understand that I'm a teacher. I understand that. I've sat on a negotiations team within my district. I understand how negotiations work.
So, you've seen their contract?
The most recent one? No, you're in negotiations.
No, their last contract.
Have I seen it? Yes. Do I have it committed to memory? Absolutely not.
Okay.
I don't. Okay? But I do understand the process. I do understand what it is to sit on the opposite side of the table during negotiations. And I do understand that a salary component is very important, and I would like these people to be compensated in a fair manner. And that is what I am asking.
And that's what we're working towards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sicala, Mr. Featherman, members of the board, I just want to make this crystal clear, that the information that my negotiation team and myself has put out to our members has never again been untrue, been false, or misleading in any way. Okay? Because that is something that I take serious. Informing these people of what is going on, keeping them in the loop, is something that is enormously dear to me. Okay? And Mr. Mandela, just to speak to briefly about your comment... Mandela, just to speak to briefly about your comment about the other night, I'm not going to speak for you, but I am going to speak for myself, and the mediators, what the mediator told us, is that, we told him we were willing to be there. Okay? You know, I had, I had made sure that my team members had understood that we were willing to stay, like we did six, seven, eight years ago now, till 6:00 a.m. So we were willing to stay, just so you understand that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Dora. I live at 56 Union Street, although lately I feel like I live at Panther Park. I moved into this town five years ago, basically at the recommendation and the reputation of the schools. I enrolled my children into South End, and several of these teachers here tonight have been a huge part of their success. My child, who is still in district, and my child, who is at a district. In September, Amy will be enrolling my youngest son at South End, and I expect and anticipate the same success for him as my older two sons. So I am here today 100% supporting these professionals in this room, because we are Cedar Grove.
Bueno, vamos a cambiar un poquito porque mi colega habla español y vamos a cambiar un poquito. Sí, okay. No, me llamo, soy Amy Soraco, en español, in the high school. I'm Amy Soraco. I teach Spanish at the high school in B-100, and I've been teaching for 13 years, and I am Cedar Grove.
I am Heather Loretano. I reside at E-224, 90 Rugby Road. I feel like more often than not. I am a math teacher at the high school, and I am Cedar Grove.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Blackman. I work at 90 Rugby Road. I am a school counselor at Cedar Grove High School. I am in my 12th year here at the, in Cedar Grove. I spent four years at the middle school and eight years at the high school, and I am Cedar Grove.
Hi, I'm Jamie Kerensky. I work at 90 Rugby Road. I'm the school psychologist at the high school for the past six years, but I've been fortunate enough to work in all of our buildings, and I am Cedar Grove.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Lasky. I reside at 90 Rugby Road. This is my 10th year at Cedar Grove High School as a physical education and health teacher, and I am Cedar Grove.
Hi, my name is Tara Williams. I reside at 7 Bradford Way, Cedar Grove. I am not a teacher, I am just a mother and a parent to a student who goes to Memorial Middle School. Again, I need to commend my son's teachers and Mr. Decourt, the principal. They are awesome. A couple, a few items. I have some concerns about this policy, the appropriate, acceptable use of electronic devices or communications. What happens if our son, or he is not, he does not sign this? Is he banned from using anything?
Yes.
Okay. Is this draft policy on the website?
Not yet, no.
Okay. When will it be, sir?
I don't know exactly, but eventually it'll be there. We've got to get, get through second reading and board approval, and we'll...
But can we look at the policy before it's officially approved? I mean, that makes sense, no?
It's not a policy, it's not a...
Okay, so the, the draft, whatever iteration it's in?
Well, last year's, the current policy that's in effect is on the website.
Okay, so, so basically, I will use that to look at, in reference to what's going to be approved.
Right, because I asked to clarify what were the different, like, what were the significant changes, and it was really about kind of apps that students use to communicate directly, one-to-one, and group messaging, and so that was what was updated. So it's really updating technology versus updating, it's updating technology that we use versus updating anything else. So the policy...
I'm sorry, I still don't understand it. I mean, I know we get really, really in the weeds and minute. For example, you know, and this is sort of a segue into the fact that while I am so proud that my son goes to Memorial Middle School, I, A, want to recognize that the Board of Education, their volunteer, A, their elected officials that I have elected, but I also want to express my disappointment and my concern about the lack of transparency, when I have to go and look at policies, word by word by word, and interpret it, in order to get some feedback, because of the, the brick wall I have run into. And I'll go into examples, but I don't think it's really appropriate to talk about specific board members who have withheld information, and based on conversations that I had with representatives from the New Jersey School Boards Association, and the Essex County Office of the Department of Education, gave me some really good insights out of district and some perspective. Had I stayed in district, I think I would probably going, be going around in circles and circles to try and resolve my concerns. So, that is why, Mrs. Marinella, I'm asking for really finite language, because I feel like we've gone back and forth...
I'm Mrs. Burke.
Oh, Mrs. Burke.
And all I said was to look at the existing policy, to understand what it covers, because as I asked Mr. Featherman, there's not significant changes in the new policy, other than updated technology that our staff and our students use.
But what does that mean? I don't understand that, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Williams, I've just asked Mr. Featherman, because I think in the interest of, of the fact that we're going to be voting on second reading, I just asked him to, to put the policy on the website. We have nothing to hide with the policy. There's no reason why you can't look at it. There's no reason why you have to go out of your way to look at it. We will post it on the website. Give us 48 hours?
I'll send it to Mr. Zoppi tomorrow.
Sometimes, give us 24 hours. It'll be on the website. We welcome your comments on that, on that policy at our next meeting.
48 hours from today.
I said, well, first 48, now he's telling me maybe tomorrow, so maybe 24 hours.
24 hours.
And we'll be posting on the website.
Thank you.
There's, there's no reason to, to not post it. If you want to see it...
I agree, I agree.
You're, you're, you're welcome to it.
Thank you. My other question and concern, I noticed there was a letter to the editor, the Verona Cedar Grove Times. I think the Board of Ed endorsed, I forget, I don't know who it is, a council member. I'm just, I'm concerned. Is that a conflict of interest? Or can you explain to me the official endorsement policy of the Board of Education when it comes to other public officials in, in the town?
The Board, the Board of Education did not endorse an official running for township council. I know, I can only speak for myself. I live in Cedar Grove. I am Cedar Grove. I have the right, as an individual, and a taxpayer, and a resident, and someone who votes, to endorse whoever, whomever I wish to endorse. If I wish to do that silently, I do it silently. If I wish to put a sign on my lawn, I put a sign on my lawn. If I wish to write a letter to the Verona Cedar Grove Times, I write a letter to the Verona Cedar Grove Times. Editorally, the Verona Cedar Grove Times mentioned that I happen to be the president of the Board of Education. Didn't ask them to mention that. They mentioned it. I don't have control over what they put in their paper, unfortunately. Sometimes I wish I did. So, my endorsement of Peter Tinella in the paper is simply a resident of the, of the township of Cedar Grove endorsing another for a position that is elected and, that someone is, is running for.
Okay, so if you, as a resident...
As a follow-up, I also wrote a letter to the editor as an individual, as a resident of Cedar Grove, because I am also Cedar Grove, and I wholly support Peter Tinella because of his experience, because of his vested interests, and that's me as a resident saying that. And I have the right, as a resident, as does Mr. Sicala, to put a sign on my lawn and to write a letter as an individual. And if the newspaper chooses to say that I am a member of the Board of Education, that is, again, beyond my control as well.
Can you endorse that right now?
Can I just follow up on one more, one more thing?
As a meeting for Cedar Grove Board of Education?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Marinelli, not Marinello.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, no, I just wanted to clarify.
Hi.
Yeah. Oh, that's right, that's right. I'm sorry. I have, got it. So, when you had spoken about, as a resident, endorsing this, this candidate here during a Board of Education meeting, is, is that okay? Is that official? Is that okay, even though you're at an official Board of Education meeting, and you're saying that you, as a resident, endorsed, and you had just mentioned your endorsement from a personal standpoint?
Mrs. Williams, if you want to get up and ask a question about someone whom I, whom I endorsed in the newspaper, I'm going to answer your question. Just like when you asked me a question about, can you see a policy that we're going to vote on for second reading? I'm going to answer your question. It might not be the answer you want. I think in this case, I gave you the answer that you hoped to hear. You're going to get the policy. But I did not stand up here in public session and endorse anybody.
No, but Ms. Di just did.
And, no, no, she did not. She answered your question about a letter to the editor that, that someone who is a resident wrote, who happens to also be a board member. You're the one who asked the question. So if, if you are concerned about whether a conflict of interest is being created, first of all, there's not, but if you're concerned, then you should count your questions more carefully.
I respectfully disagree, Mr. Sicala.
And that's fine, Mrs. Williams.
And I also disagree that Ms. Di's endorsement, personal endorsement, I think she just took up some Board of Education time, some official Board of Education time, by endorsing her.
No, Mrs. Di, Mrs. Di answered your question, Mrs. Williams. Do you have any other further questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So, so let me just clarify. You and the other board member did not officially endorse this candidate as a Board of Education member.
That is correct.
Absolutely.
And, and... As a resident. Okay, that's all I wanted to know, because I was concerned that there was a conflict of interest, if you did, on behalf of the Board of Education, who is elected by taxpayers, people in the community, who may want to look at other people who are running on the slate this year. That's simply my concern. Thank you so much for your time.
Mrs. Williams, we can, we can only act as a board when all of us have acted together, or at least the majority of us have acted together.
Exactly.
And, and we have, and we have not done that. There's been no vote, there's been no official public endorsement by the Board of Education. It, it's, it's simply a figment of, of, of your creation at the microphone. I, there's...
First of all, I respectfully disagree, and I'm, I'm sorry and I'm disappointed that you had to resort to that type of language during a Board of Education meeting. In the beginning of this meeting, you displayed your anger. Somebody else was kind enough to invoke a waiver, and you were completely professional to this person. And then you have this other comment here, so I'm not going to waste anybody's time anymore, sir. Thank you.
Oh, Mrs. Williams, that's exactly, that's exactly what you're doing, but let me, let me just tell you that I didn't invoke any waiver. I don't have the authority to invoke a waiver. I merely told the individual, because he is a teacher in the district, that he can use his professional address. I did not allow him to waive his obligation to state his address.
Was there not, the word "waiver" discussed?
No. The person used the word "waiver," and I said, "No." You were not granted a waiver.
Right, so waiver was discussed. The name, the word "waiver" was discussed, sir.
Okay, Mrs. Williams, the word was used, not by me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comment or questions by any members of the public?
Yes. My name is Janine Frill. Although I've been accused of living at three of the four schools in the district, I actually reside at 26 Cedar Street in Cedar Grove. I have lived here for 25 years. My husband is a lifelong resident. I have a son, nieces, nephews, sister-in-laws, that have been through the Cedar Grove School District, and some are currently still in it. I am fully supporting my teachers and the staff right here, right now, and without getting into a verbal debate or ping-pong game with any of the board, I'm a little embarrassed at some of the behavior this evening and very disappointed. But I am Cedar Grove.
Any further questions or comments from members of the public, for items either on or off the agenda? Seeing none, I will make the announcement of...
Wait, I have a comment.
If you close that portion of the public?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd just like to say, it, it bothers me when I hear that, you know, the behavior of, of things that went on tonight. Many of you know me in this room, and I want, again, my whole intent tonight, I guess, was not communicated properly, because what I, my whole purpose of even speaking tonight was just to clarify a perception that the board is not, A, supportive of our teachers, if that's a perception out there, B, that we don't care, C, that we are stalling things. None of that is happening. If human, whatever has happened over the year that has caused delays, or whatever happened, was not intentional, it was not in any way, shape, or form, a sign of disrespect to the teachers. And if it came across that way, I believe that we communicated that with your leadership. And that's the part that I just wanted to make sure that you knew. So if it was interpreted that I, Mr. Canelo, was saying that you were not conveying information to your association, I apologize to you publicly, that was not my intent. Again, it's just the perception that I feel is causing this unneeded unsettlement. And it bothers me, because I have lived in this town for over 20 years, and I am Cedar Grove, and my kids are Cedar Grove, and I have, again, the same passion that all of you have. And one thing I may have said before, I may not agree with everybody in this room, but I respect people, and I will always respect people. And I care that you're upset, that you're upset, that everyone's upset. It bothers me. I will go home tonight, and it'll bother me, it'll bother me next week, it'll bother me, and I will replay tonight in my head, saying, "I wish I said something different," for you not to feel the way you feel. For you not to feel the way you feel. Because I would never be disrespectful to anyone. That's who I am as a person, for those that know me. And for those that don't know me, unfortunately, you get a perception of me tonight. Again, a perception. And if it was up to me, I would give every single one of you everything you want. But I can't. It's not fiscally responsible. Do I want to be fair? Yes. And I am working towards that. And so is Mrs. Marinelli. We are doing everything we can, and maybe that's why we don't have a contract right now, because we're not feeling it, either side. And I'm telling you, it will be fair, as every way I can. So I hope that all of you accept my apology if I insulted anyone tonight. That was not my intent. So I apologize to all of you if I did that, but I want you to know where I'm coming from. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandela. Announcement of future meetings. Our next meeting will be held here at the North End Media Center on May 12, 2015. That would be 7:00 p.m. for executive session, 8:00 p.m. for the regular meeting. And the following, the meeting following will be May 19, 2015, at the North End Media Center, 7:00 p.m. executive session, 8:00 p.m. regular meeting. That's subject to change. We'll announce that at the next meeting, depending on, on some meeting issues that we have with the board. But May 12 will be, will certainly be our next meeting. Any final comments from the board?
I believe May 12 is also Election Day in Cedar Grove, so remember to vote.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Di?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.